Okay, good afternoon. The time is 1:30 PM. The date is Thursday, March 7th, 2024. It's another beautiful day here in paradise, and I'm very happy to call to order the regularly scheduled March meeting of the West Palm Beach Zoning Board of Appeals. I'll first have our Board Secretary please call the roll.
Christopher Hagan.
Here.
Christopher Cammer.
Here.
Michael Hyman.
Here.
Jonathan Burgess.
Here.
Alfred Fields.
Here.
Matthew Chambers.
Here.
May the record reflect that Dana Peacock is not in attendance today.
Okay, thank you. And we do have a quorum. At this point, we'll ask all those present to please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, our first item of business is review and approval of the minutes from the February meeting. I'll first ask if anyone up here has any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes? Do you want to make note?
I just had that one minor when it's on, I forget the page, I think it's page 14, where you check off ex parte communications. I had none.
Perfect. Okay, and I think the Board Secretary is in receipt of your modification. Any other additions, corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Some of.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by, moved by Board Member Hyman and seconded by Board Member Fields. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Next, we're going to move on to a report from our Planning Division staff. If a representative from Planning can come up, please.
Good evening, Board. Angela Van Penning is on it. Administrator, there's no updated report from staff today.
Okay, thank you. That moves us to remarks by the Chairperson. The only remarks I'll make are just to go over the rules and procedures for today's meeting. Matters before the ZBA are quasi-judicial in nature. Anyone wishing to speak, including members of the public who wish to offer public comment, will need to be sworn in. The applicant will make a presentation, then answer any questions from the board. After that, the applicant will be followed by city staff, who will provide a presentation and a recommendation to the board, and then will answer any questions. Then members of the public will be given the opportunity to provide comment, with each person receiving up to three minutes to speak. City staff will also insert any public comment received in advance of today's meeting, such as emails, voicemails, et cetera, into the record. The applicant will then have an opportunity for rebuttal, and then the floor will be closed, and the board will go into executive session for discussion, motion, and a vote. And as a reminder, four affirmative votes are required for approval. With that, that concludes my remarks, and I will move now to a declaration of ex parte communication. So I'll start off on my right with Board Member Fields.
As to the matter of zoning board appeals case number 3418, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Vice Chair Cammer.
As to matter case number 3418, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. Request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Board Member Hyman.
With regards to item 3418 on our agenda, I have not had any ex parte communications, have not received written communications, have not conducted an investigation, have not made a site visit, and have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Board Member Burgess.
As to matter 3418, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Board Member Chambers.
In regards to case number 3418, I have not had any ex parte communications, I have not received any written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, and I have not received any expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. And for myself, as to matter 3418, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record. With that, I will now move to beginning the public hearing, and we'll start off with the swearing of the speakers. I'll ask our Board Secretary to please, so anyone wishing to speak on any of the matters today, please rise, raise your right hand, and we'll have the Board Secretary swear you in.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move into our case C1, which is zoning board of appeals case number 3418. I'll have our Board Secretary please read that item into the record.
Zoning Board Appeals Case Number 34, 3418, a request by Carl Flick for a Class B special use permit to obtain a waiver from the requirements of Section 94-304E2 of the City's zoning and land development regulations for the installation of a fitness spa within the required side setback.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. We'll have, now start off with the applicant making a presentation here. And please introduce your, yourself name and record, sorry, name and address for the record.
Okay. My name is Carl Flick. I am the applicant. I reside at 22134 Street in West Palm Beach, which is the Northwood Shores neighborhood. I'm going to go ahead and make a five-minute presentation. At the end of that five-minute presentation, I'll also address some of the concerns that I saw in the letters. I think there were five letters. So I'll address some of those concerns as well, and then I'll conclude and turn it over to staff for completion of the presentation. I just want to make sure I had the pointer button here before. Okay, so, does work. Okay. This is for the installation of a swim spa, and swim spa has a jet so that you can swim against the current. It's a little bit larger than a spa, this particular one. You can see on the cover sheet over here on the slide. And because of the details that I'm going to give you within our yard, we had to go, we're proposing that we go into the sideyard setback three feet, which would leave a net two feet to the property line. All right, here you can see the location of our property, again, within the Northwood Shores neighborhood. It's on 34th Street. We're not on the waterfront. You can see the Lake Worth Lagoon on that illustration. Our particular property is much smaller than the other properties that are within the neighborhood. In fact, some of our, some of the properties in our neighborhood measuring about 6,000 square feet, we're much less than that. We're probably a good 25% to 35% smaller than the average parcels within our neighborhood, and that's part of the reason why I'm here. Here you can see an aerial of the property. One shows more of the surrounding area, and you can see on the close-up that our particular property has a lot of vegetation. My wife and I are very much into nature. We have many trees that are in excess of 65 years of age. All of them are alive and thriving. There's no dead trees on the property because there was a comment on that. So we also have bird feeders, we have resident squirrels, we have lots of wildlife in our particular property, and it is our goal that we would maintain that, that we would not have to take out any of the trees to move the spa to within the setback. Here is a picture of the front of our house, just to confirm that we do maintain the home. That picture was taken three days ago. We're in the process of doing a lot of upgrades to the sideyard and rear yard. We have approved permits to put in new fencing, to put in a paver system. We have a central area in the backyard that will have pavers, and I'll show you the diagram of that in just a moment. But in terms of where we can put this apparatus for our health, we have very few options. I also want to mention that the, the view of this spa will be completely hidden from anywhere. It won't be, you won't be able to see it when we are outside of our yard. We have fencing in place, and new fencing coming. We, from the front yard, there will be no evidence that it's there. From our neighbor's yard, which is contiguous, she's fine with it. She's written a letter indicating that she's fine with it. She will not have a view of it, nor will she hear it. It's a very quiet spa. Just as background, we purchased this home in July of 1988. I've lived in the neighborhood for over 30 years. The house is in good shape. It's regularly maintained. Again, I'm responding to one letter that was written. The grass is always mowed, and my wife and I have loved this home, loved living in this community, and been a part of this community for over Here's a survey and diagram of the property on this next slide. You can see the relationship of the house. It's centered on the property, and you can see that if you look to the left, which is the west side, west side yard, there are underground utilities that go underneath there. There's gas, there's water, where, there are trees there too, in that coverage. And so if you look on the diagram there on the wall, on the screen, you'll see where the tracement of the trees are. The trees are really large, and going back to the aerial that you saw, you can see that there's a distinct difference between our yard and some of the neighboring yards. We like the trees. I also want to mention that on the north side of the property, the very extreme north, that is a utility easement where you have an outfall sewer pipe that is common to all the properties. And so that is not an option for placement either. So, and again, we have three mature trees in the rear of the yard, or four mature trees, two oak trees, a 45-foot ficus tree, an aki tree, a palm tree. We have, there is no opportunity to put the spa in that location, nor would we be allowed to put them. It would create an issue to put that on top of the right-of-way easement that's in the rear. We're not seeking to limit or to remove the vegetation, again, because of our perspective on nature. We also had originally talked about moving, you can see the spa placement. I don't have a pointer. And so if you look on that diagram, you'll see a rectangle that's red, outlined in red, and it's on the right side, near the property line and near the house. And you can see that its placement is right where the sideyard and the backyard meet. No trees there, nothing to disturb too much. We moved it back. Originally, we had it farther forward. We talked with our neighbor next door who's contiguous, and she, she didn't express concern, but she has two 100-year-old southern pines in her sideyard. They're beautiful. They've been there since the 1800s. So we moved that back to make sure there was no encroachment on the tree roots for her trees. As I mentioned, the spa goes into the sideyard three feet, okay? And it does not, it is two feet away. We have landscaping along the edge of the yard, which is orange jasmine, hedge, that type of thing, other bushes that attract butterflies, hummingbirds. I also want to mention again that on this diagram here, you can see the brick paver system that we're going to install. It will encircle the sideyard, the backyard, with a central focus in that backyard right there, and then come around to the west side yard. We've secured building permits. They've been approved by the city of West Palm Beach, and the fence, the new fencing will be installed, and the paver system will be installed according to the plans that were submitted to the building department. One other thing I want to mention is that we cannot move the spa closer to the house, and that's a problem. There are hurricane awnings attached to the windows, and that would put the spa directly in that path. They're high enough up that we can walk under them, but the spa is such that it doesn't work to place it under those particular features. Here's more information provided in the staff report. You can see generally the placement of the spa in relation to the house in the leftmost diagram. And this is before we decided to shift it back 20 feet. So, but it still gives you the relative placement. You can see it's behind a fence on both sides there. The fence is going to be, again, a new fence, and will be out of view from all neighbors. There are no negative impacts to the neighborhood. The staff report backs that assertion up. If you look through the staff report, there are no objections on all points. One of the things that were brought up in the letter, letters to the city, were that neighbors that were objecting thought that this would in some way create a precedence, that it would in some way pollute or hurt the SF7 zoning district. We're in SF7, which is seven units per acre residential, single-family. The whole purpose of a variance or a Class B special use permit is to ensure, by its very nature, you're granting an exception for that specific use at that specific location. It cannot be, as you all know, it cannot be applied anywhere else. It cannot be used as a precedence anywhere else. And a good example of that are, we have on our waterfront, people that are putting in docks longer than what is allowed, and they come in either for a variance or a Class B special use permit. Each of those docks, when they're approved, is a special permit for that exception. It's not to be applied anywhere else. Further, this does not limit any option to our contiguous neighbor to the east. Liz Morton, who lives to the east, was concerned about that. She called the staff person, Alexis Sengelier. She confirmed that. She is also confirmed with a land use attorney. He confirmed that as well. She has, she has complete leeway, regardless of the approval, to do anything she wants on her property. So within your packet is a letter from the contiguous neighbor, who's really the only neighbor impacted by this, and she has no objections. When she learned that there would be no restrictions to her property, she was fine with it. She came over and toured the yard, was supportive. We've provided pictures in the packet of the side yard so that you could see it. We're, this is also where the new paver system will go, and where the new fence will go. Spa is quiet. It won't be heard from outside the yard. I already mentioned that it can't be placed next to the house, and the reason why, because of the awnings, the hurricane awnings. We're seeking this particular specialized spa because my wife needs that for health benefits. I would like it for health benefits, too. I'm getting older. More exercise is good. We see this as a win-win. This is a considerable investment into our community. We're making other investments in our home as well. We've spent in excess of $15,000 already in preparation for this, and we're hoping that you'll give approval. One other thing, the neighbor, her garage, Liz Morton, who lives next door to us, is an additional buffer for the spa. Once we moved it towards the rear of the house, there's additional intervening area of her house where she rarely enters. That's also a buffer. And last, I would say on this slide is, our objective is to integrate this into our yard rather than to make it a main feature. We don't want this to be the crowning glory of our backyard. We want it to be off to the side where it doesn't command what we see as a respectful area for nature. So I appreciate and respect our neighbors who are concerned about their community, our community. They have voiced their concern, and it is certainly within their rights to do that. We support that. We want to make sure that the current concerns that they raise are indeed valid. And so what I've, in my presentation, I've given my perspective and also the staff report, which asserts that thinking that this would be, in some way negatively impact the single-family zoning SF7 in our community is not a correct assumption. As it says in the staff report, it complies with all rules. If you look through the staff report, there isn't a single rule that this has some issue with. It complies with all And we, my wife and I, are relieved that this does not in any way set a precedent for the community. We love the community, too. If that did that, we wouldn't be doing this. We wouldn't want to in any way pollute the SF7 zoning. We like that zoning. It protects our community, and we're very much for making sure that that zoning does not in any way get negatively impacted. I just want to assert that we've enjoyed working with staff. Alexis Sengelier has been the utmost professional in all doing with this. She has fielded phone calls on this, and we see her as the expert. And so when she makes her presentation, we would urge you to listen to what she has to say about this as well. Don't take my word for it. The last thing I want to do is quickly respond. There were a number of letters. Almost all of them dealt with the issue of whether this would impact the zoning. And there was a letter from a neighbor. I'm going to go back to the diagram. Hold on one second. Oops. Sorry. Okay. Okay. There was a, a rather colorful letter that was written by one of our neighbors to the, to the north. There, she is actually on 35th Street. This might not show it as well. Let me try to get one. Okay. She is the red-roofed house there, okay? And she makes a number of assertions. I just want to quickly respond. I have never, ever called code enforcement on anyone in our neighborhood. Never, never, never. It's our policy never to do that. We did have an issue with, she had an issue with two of our oak trees, and she called code enforcement a number of times. We invited code enforcement into our backyard to look at the trees. FPNL came and trimmed the trees. We, again, we were trying to please them, and we did that without incident. She claims that I turned FPNL away. Not true. We don't own any other homes in the, in the Northwood Shores neighborhood. I'm not, yeah, so it's just not a true thing. We did attempt to invite her into the neighborhood when she came seven years ago. We went over, dressed up, went over, and knocked on her door. They answered. We got a very short phone conversation talking with her and her husband at the time. And we did bring up, I think we got about two sentences out. We did bring up about the loud TV viewing in the backyard, and, and he closed the door on us. So that's, in seven years, that's the only conversation we had with them. We did know that she was this upset, and she maintains her home meticulously. We compliment her on how well she maintains her home. We maintain our home, too. So I just want to correct that in the letter. And also, she makes the claim that I have some rules that I impose upon everybody else. This is not true. If I'm not calling the code inspector on anyone in the neighborhood, I'm not imposing any rules on anyone else. And certainly, we love our neighbors. We have good neighbors. So it is a surprise to me that there is this amount of emotion on this issue, which should be cut in dry. With that, I'll conclude my presentation. Thank you very much. I know you're coming here, spending time just with me on the agenda. Thank you for meeting quorum, and thank you for your deliberation.
Okay. We'll start off with any, please stay up here. We'll have any board questions for the applicant. So I'll start off with Vice Chair Cammer. If you have any questions for the applicant?
Sure.
Mr. Flick, yeah, please stay up. We'll go to, if the board has any questions for you at this point, we'll, we'll address them to you, and then, and then we'll move to the staff presentation.
Okay. Mr. Flick, could you pull up the survey that you had up earlier?
Yes.
Yeah, that one, right there. Okay, just to confirm, the spa is about midway in your property, and it, your next-door neighbor, who it's closest to, would be Ms. Morton, correct?
Correct. And that would be to the, on that diagram, to the right.
Correct, okay. Have you spoken, because there are a number of objections. Have you spoken with any of your neighbors other than Ms. Morton?
Yes.
As to what they're, why they're concerned?
Well, I have, and the ones that are concerned, I haven't spoken to the people that are here in the audience. So I guess that answers your question.
Have you spoken to any of your neighbors who object to our granting this waiver?
Yes.
Okay, and what has their response been to you?
When explained that the, that there was no impacts on the zoning, the, the one or two that I spoke to were fine with it.
Okay, you also, the, the noise level, you described it as quiet. Obviously, we can't determine that here. I guess that's something we'll have to ask the city. Okay, I don't have any further questions.
Okay. I'll now go to Board Member Hyman.
Thank you. Hello. Is this what would be commonly referred to as a resistance pool?
Yes.
Okay. And on, have you purchased this already?
Yes.
So you own, you own this in anticipation of this approval. Is that correct?
Exactly, yes.
The size of, the size of the pool, I think you had a picture of a pool up there that appeared to be square. Someone was in the, in the pool.
Need measures?
Not the one that you're purchasing, which that looks like, but it was a different...
It's the exact model. We went and photographed it.
No, I'm talking about, you had a picture of someone in the, in the spa. It was a square spa, I believe that...
Is that the first slide? I'll go back.
Yes, that one.
That's the same model.
That's 15 by eight feet?
Yes.
So it's distorted because of the angle the picture's taken?
Yes.
Okay. Is this the only size pool that they offer?
For what, I'm a pretty strong swimmer. We tried going to the one smaller model that they had, and I kept bumping into the jet. And so we went up one, one size, and I think it's two feet longer than the... We tried going to the one smaller model that they had and I kept bumping into the jet. And so we went up one size. And I think it's two feet longer than the smaller version. And so for me...
And the same width, if I might have...
Same width.
Okay. And finally, could you put the picture of the site plan back up? That one. I see that you've got a shed in the drawing?
Yes.
Is that shed still there now?
Yes.
Was that considered as a location? Parallel to that shed, was that considered as a possible location for the resistance pool?
It was not.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Board Member Burgess?
Thank you. So my questions are about the impacts to the existing vegetation. So am I correct with assuming that the yellow circles represent the rough trunk size of all of the trees on the site? Or is that just to locate the general location of the trees themselves?
More option number two, the general location. When you... If you compare this to the aerial shot, you'll see the canopies are much larger.
For sure. But in terms of the trunk size and relative to the setback to the north side of the swim spa and its proposed location, would you give me a rough estimate of what the setback looks like between the two? How close is it coming to the trunk?
On all sides or which side?
Just the north side. The tree most close to the swim spa to the north.
Okay. That particular one is a citrus tree and...
Okay.
And then the arica palm is the next one. That's a really old arica palm. It's way up there.
Okay. So neither of the specimens you mentioned are large canopy root zones?
Right. If you look behind the shed, there is an enormous Florida ficus.
Right.
And that stretches actually more than what I've depicted on the diagram. It stretches into our neighbor's yard, Liz's yard. And it stretches into the rear property yard, which... And by the way, they don't have any objection, to their pool area. And then it stretches a little bit to the left of the shed. It's enormous. There are trunks coming down as a ficus would.
Yeah. Okay. So in terms of the tree that's got the closest proximity to the swim spa, if it's small now and we're studying the maturity of the tree and the extent of the root zone, my concern with the EZ pad and/or whatever slab is poured for that reinforcement, it could compact the root zone eventually of that tree. So we just want to make a recommendation here that if we were to support the application, that the pad that the swim spa stands on looks at following Arborist's recommendations to avoid root compaction specifically for the, you know, the corners or for the extent of the swim spa. Because that's a very heavy water load onto it. And if it were a more established, larger tree, it would be violating the critical root zone area and eventually start to harm the tree. And as a big advocate for trees yourself, I can imagine you appreciate that. So I would want to just, you know, make that part of the comments here that we should be looking at the critical root zone in relation to that tree and ensuring that the swim spa is either set back from that critical root zone or raised on a slab that can minimize root compaction.
Okay.
But no other questions. Thank you.
Okay. Board Member Chambers?
Thank you. Most of my questions were... I think all of my questions now were answered. We had some of the same questions on the board here. So at this point, I'll say I have no questions.
Okay. And Board Member Fields? Questions for the applicant?
Yes. The question with regards to staff's conditions that they are imposing, are you fully aware of the conditions that staff is recommending and imposing?
Yes.
And are you in agreement with those recommendations?
Yes.
No further questions.
Okay. I don't have any questions of the applicant. I think anything I had a question on has been asked and answered. So thank you. We'll now have city staff come up and make a presentation.
Thank you so much.
Alexis Sanglier. Alexis Sanglier, planner for the record. Carl touched upon a lot of stuff, so I'm just going to mostly focus on the standards and then general, the request. So I don't think it was stated, the request is for a three-foot waiver because the side setback would be five feet for this. Sorry about that. And then we did explore... I have had discussion with Carl based off the location and why he's requesting it. And he did inform me about the onings and the existing vegetation of all the trees and landscaping on the site. I have spoken to Liz Morton a couple of times to ensure that this would not be located on her property. She did what you have, the evidence of the email she supported and the letter that she is okay with the spa being there. And she is the most affected neighbor by the spa being placed here. And then the standards that we're voting on today are the general specific standards, the residential district standards, and the additional standards, and then the waiver standards. Staff finds that this request meets all the standards. So these are the letters of support and the letters of objection that you have and the correlation of where they are compared to the applicant's subject property. This one? You're welcome. And staff is recommending approval with condition that the applicant maintains the upkeep of the existing fence and landscaping to reduce the impact of the neighbor to the east, Liz Morton. Are there any questions with me in particular?
Okay. I'll ask board members if they have questions of staff. So I'll start off with Board Member Hyman. Any questions of staff?
Thank you. One question for you. The typical lot size in... I'm assuming there's a subdivision from 1940 or whenever it might have been. This particular lot's 75 by 103. What's the typical lot size throughout the adjacent community?
It depends if... I would say in the Northwood Shores particularly or like in general, a single family?
If Northwood Shores is the subdivision that this property's a part of and the neighbors are talking, you know, relative to that area, I'd like to know if this is a typical lot size, if it's bigger than others, what the situation would be pursuant to the plot.
I would say this area in particular, some of the lots are bigger, some of them are smaller. I feel like it fits an average of the area. So the average lot size based off the area, if that makes sense to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Board Member Burgess?
No questions for staff.
Okay. Board Member Chambers?
Hi, Alexis. So my question is, the neighbor to the east who is not feeling that there's any approachment on their property or... If that was not a letter of support, would the city staff still approve it based on the recommendations here and based on the applicant's request? Because I asked that if the neighbor to the east is no longer that neighbor coming forward, would it be a problem? I'm guessing not based on what's presented?
It would still be looked at case by case. Obviously, that support letter helps. But if the conclusion of all the evidence that this is the most liable location for this fitness spa, or if anything, like if it wasn't a spa, it would still be... Staff would take their professional opinion, follow the standards.
That was my question and it was answered. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Board Member Fields?
No questions.
Vice Chair Cameron?
I have a couple of questions. Can you tell me, what is the reason for having a five-foot setback?
I believe for the fitness spa, I think it's... That is what our general for accessory structure is for five feet. Homes also, it would be primary structure. One side would be five, the other one would be 10. So that is a normal side setback requirement is five feet.
Okay. So if this spa was outside of the five feet, there wouldn't be an issue as to it being placed on the property somewhere? I take it.
Could you rephrase that?
Sure. If he wasn't requesting this variance, if he was going to place this on his patio, okay, outside of this five-foot setback, there wouldn't be any issue with him placing it there, I'm assuming?
No. If he's putting it on his patio and he meets the required setbacks, just go through regular permitting.
Because it seems to me like the key waiver provision is this additional provision C surrounding properties where the staff found that the use would not be detrimental to the use, peaceful enjoyment, and value of the surrounding properties. Can you tell me how you or the staff made that decision? Based on what?
Based off the area, how it is properly screened. This won't be visual to other neighbors. There's proper landscaping. Let me try to think. Trying to reword this. Other homes in the area have spas, hot tubs. Granted, this one is requesting a waiver, but the use of a fitness spa is not obscured from the appeal and harmony with the neighborhood. So ultimately, does this stand out? Will it obscure the appeal of the neighborhood?
Okay. And let me ask you the last thing. Any... Were you able to listen to how... I mean, it wasn't set up at that time, so I'm guessing you're not able to see how loud it was? The spa.
I can't confirm how loud.
Very good. That's all the questions I have. Thanks.
I just had a couple of questions and it partly has to do with the condition that's proposed. And I may have actually... It may be that this is better proposed to the applicant. But I thought in the applicant's presentation, you mentioned something about a new fence? And this, you know, says the property owner shall maintain the upkeep of the existing fence. Is it just that the existing fence is going to be fully maintained or is there a new fence also being proposed to be installed? And again, yeah, maybe it is better that the applicant answer that.
He does have a permit in for the fence, but you can speak more on it, Carl.
Okay.
Yes, we have a old fence and it looks terrible. And so we, as part of this, are building a new fence and it'll look great.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's relevant to, you know, the... This discussion as it has to do with the screening of this to the neighboring property as it would be located closer to the neighboring property to the east. So a couple of questions. Because, yeah, one of the photos, I couldn't tell if the existing was a chain link. It looked like maybe there's a portion of chain link, a portion of wood fence. What material is the fence?
The chain link that you're seeing belongs to our neighbor, Liz Morton, to the east. That's her fence and it's exactly on the property line. We have a wooden stockade fence and we're going to replace that with probably an overlapping wooden stockade fence. A little more privacy.
I see. And then, and the height of the fence that you're installing?
We can only go up to six feet.
And it will be six feet then?
Yes.
Okay. And my understanding, I think from the specs that I saw of the product, it's... The height is five feet of... Sorry, of the apparatus?
Yes, exactly. Yes.
Okay. So it would be below the fence height? So it will be... My point here is it will be screened then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. In addition, we also have a hedge there of orange jasmine. And we're going to... In some of the older ones, we're going to plant newer ones so that they're more robust and full, which will also further buffer.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. And then going back to staff, I guess what I'm looking at is, and maybe we'll discuss this in executive session, the word existing fence, you know, upkeep of existing fence, so we may want to consider alternate language if this... If it were to be recommended for approval and if this condition were to be part of that recommendation, we may want to consider something other than the word existing fence if there is a new fence being installed. Okay. I don't have any other questions for staff. Thank you.
I came up with one, if I can get one shot here. The setback, five-foot setback, is for the water surface of a pool. If this were pool equipment, is there a side setback for pool equipment?
Pool equipment would be... But so it would be on the side setback would be one foot.
One foot. Okay. And if it were like another piece of mechanical equipment like HVAC?
One foot per side. Rear is slightly in, so rear would be 10% lot depth. So the rear setback's mechanical would there be five feet. So but side setback for mechanical is one foot.
Okay. So for some accessory structures and mechanical equipment, so you can go closer to the property line then five feet?
Correct, yes.
But because this is a water body that requires the five-foot setback to the water surface?
Well, it would still follow. So accessory structures and pools follow the same setback.
Right.
So it's not necessarily that this is water because accessory structures also follow five foot.
Understood. Okay. No further questions for staff. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. I'll now open the public hearing. First, we did receive, it was a total of eight emails and pieces of communication that have all been provided to the board. I trust that everyone here is in receipt of those and was able to look at those. So that public comment was received by the city and has been forwarded to the board. Here, we do have three comment cards, so I'll read them one at a time. I'll ask them to please come forward. And I think a couple of these were folks who had also provided written communication to city staff that was provided to us. So first, I'll ask Sumner Kay to please come forward.
Excuse me. I'm Sumner Kay.
Please come to the microphone.
Yeah, I know.
Whatever you say has to be on the record, so please come to the microphone.
Excuse me. I was in Vietnam and I got hurt there.
I'm sorry to hear that.
A long time ago by President Johnson. What I'd like to have is Brad Greaves speak first. He's an architect. He can correct some of the testimony by Mr. Flick. Then I'd like to follow if that's appropriately accepted.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll have Mr. Greaves come forward.
Brad first.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, just please state your name and address for the record and confirm the events warning.
My name is Brad Garvin. I live at 23634th Street, which is within the 500 feet of the property in question. Given that the lots in our neighborhood are spacious and the setbacks are minimal, I see no legitimate reason to allow overbuilding on the property. I believe this is a bad precedent. I would also like to say more specifically, while the hot tub might be quiet, people sitting on the edge of the hot tub may not be. And the tub is up three or four feet and the fence is only six feet. So whoever's in that tub can easily see over into the neighbor's yard. Overbuilding in the neighborhood is a bad thing to do. And I'm going to talk about, contrary to what was testified here, his lot is not less than 6,500 square feet. It's 7,725 square feet and every lot on that side of the street is identical. So it is typical to that. So the fact that he hasn't maintained his landscaping and wishes to have a hot tub within the setback, there's no right to let someone build in the setback. Setbacks are there for a reason and that question was asked. They're to stop neighbors' development from intruding on the adjacent neighbors. So... And I have spoken to Liz, by the way, also, who lives next door. She's terrified of going against him, by the way. So you would do her and all of us a favor by not allowing this. This strikes me as someone who's trying to game the system and he's trying to preserve the development property in his backyard. He has another home he's leaving in the very near future. And we don't know what's going to happen on that hot tub someday when somebody moves in and has three teenage sons with girlfriends sitting up on the edge of that. It's just a bad thing to do. I'm completely against the waiver. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now I will ask Sumner Kay to please come back up. Again, start off with your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, I live at 20834th Street. I've been there for 21 years. Mr. Flick's testimony, this is not the circuit court, it could be though. Mr. Flick's testimony had some really bad remarks in there and hasn't spoken to the group behind me because he doesn't speak to them. and hasn't spoken to the group behind me, because he doesn't speak to them at all, even if we approach him to speak. He runs in his house, shuts the door, and locks the door on us. We are the people that are part of this NS property, and we've had no problems with any neighbors, except for Mr. Flick. He becomes very contentious. He is confrontation. He calls the cops on everybody because he doesn't like what we wore that day. This is an insidious personality, and I'm sorry to have to bring this out like this, because I like the mayor, I like the commissioners, and it's high time that this gentleman, who's been getting away with all this stuff for years, has just really, really caused my wife, who's Vietnamese, concern for her life. And that's about all I have to say about it, except I'm against anything that has a special exception. We don't need it. As Robert Frost said, the poet at Harvard, he said, quote unquote, or his son said, "Fences make good neighbors." That what he's talking about makes us a better neighbor, because it keeps our lot nice, clean, and neat. We don't need any interruption with any of those things. Please listen to us. We kind of know things. We've been around the world. We fought for this country. I'm asking for the commissioners to reject, not the commissioners, you gentlemen, to reject this based on some fibs that you already spoke to. And we can't get in a worded edgeway with this guy, because he doesn't like us, because we disagree with his egregious behavior. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The last card I have was from Brian McCarthy at 21434th Street. It was checked, "I do not wish to speak, but request my comment be made part of the record as follows. A simple pool, not pushing walls of whom outward, should not be an issue." I'll ask now if anyone else here is present in the chambers who had not yet filled out a card, if they would like to come up and speak. Yes, sir, if, yeah, if you'd like to come speak. Please state your name and address for the record and confirm the events warranted.
Brian McCarthy, and I'm at 21434th Street. I'm right across the street from Carl. I'm here because I received the notice, and I didn't quite understand it. And when I saw Carl on the street, I went up to him and asked him about it, and he spoke with me like he always does. He didn't run away. And he explained it was just a formality, and that we, you know, I asked if I needed to do anything. He said, "No, it's just a formality." I had a neighbor stop me the next day or two, and kind of unloaded what we should be thinking. And I went online myself and kind of overworked Google for a while, and so I had an idea of what was going on with setback and variance and whatnot. And I have since received the email talking about what a terrible thing this is. I received a phone call along the same lines. And like I feel, and that is that he's asking for three feet. It's, I, being across the street from his house, I can tell you I have never seen the backyard. Well, I have when I was inside the house once, but I have never seen it from the street. It's very well-hidden. I've never felt his place was badly maintained at all. I think he, you know, very, he fits within the neighborhood. I've never had a problem dealing with him. He's always seemed to be very honest, forthright. And I just, to be honest, I'm here because I don't understand why it is such an issue when it's just three feet, and it's a spa, and it's for health reasons. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask staff if there were any voicemails or anything that need to be entered into the record.
There are no voicemails that need to be written in the record. All records that you have are those emails, and those are all the ones that we received.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll make one last call if there's anyone present who wishes to speak. Otherwise, I'll close the public hearing. Okay, the public hearing is closed. At this point, the board will go into executive session. So I'll start off with Board Member Burgess.
No further comments.
Okay. Board Member Chambers?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear his comment. I didn't have any.
The only comment I had was about the being, setting precedent, and I think that was answered, that each case is on its own, so it's not necessarily setting precedent. And that's my comment.
Okay. I think it's appropriate, I'll ask our board attorney to weigh in on that, because that was a question that came up in the written communications we received, and it has been stated here. So whether or not the action we take here today sets a precedent?
Well, in the sense that it reflects the action of this board on this application, it's precedent. However, your decision in every individual case is based on the evidence presented and whether it meets the standards for the application. If it does without regards to precedence, you are required to vote accordingly. So even if it sets precedent, if the application meets the requirements of the standards, then you are required to approve it. If it doesn't, you are required to disapprove it, without regards to what happened in the past.
Okay. Is that clear for the board members here, as far as that question goes? Thank you to our attorney for wise words, and counsel, as always, appreciate that. We'll now move to Board Member Fields. Any comments for executive session?
I do have a question for the attorney as well. The granting of the variance would apply for any replacement in the future as well of any of this particular spa. So in the future, if that spa was to be replaced, they don't have to come back and get another?
You can't decide whether a future action would be governed by this one until you see that action. There may be differences which would require a different result. You can only, you can only make a decision about the matter before you today. You can't make a decision that would pertain to something that may happen in the future.
And I was asking a question more for the public knowledge as well. Thank you.
Any other commentary or your questions?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Vice Chair Cameron?
So it seems like the, what stands out about this matter is the number of objections by the neighbors and in the neighborhood. And there have been, seem to be far more than there are in favor. And we've heard a little bit of both sides of that, but we're not really in the position here to litigate and adjudicate neighborhood disputes. We're here to adjudicate whether a waiver is appropriate in this manner. It seems to me that there's a reason there is a five-foot setback, and the question really is, is waiving that a legitimate call for here? It seems to me that Mr. Flick could place this spa somewhere else in his property, and there would be no basis for any of the neighbors to really object, because he can put it there. It's, whether it's loud or not, apparently, that's not a base on which to grant or deny anything. The reason we're here is because Mr. Flick has chosen to, would like to put the spa in the place he selected. If he had put it on his patio, I don't think we'd have an issue. So the real question is, is he entitled to the, to a waiver here? And I'll have to defer to the city on that, because they've gone out and they've made the inspection. And it seems like the person who would be most impacted here would be Ms. Morton. And we've seen something written by her that says she doesn't have an issue, although one of the neighbors says that she's terrified. However, again, we can't adjudicate that. We can only base our decision on what is presented. So those would be my concerns and thoughts, thoughts here.
Okay. And Board Member Hyman?
Thank you. I think that, from my perspective, I think we've got the 11 criteria that we're asked to measure the request upon. And I'm not sure that we've necessarily met those, the feeling that's contained within the, those 11 criteria. One in particular has been talked about is in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood. And I think that what we're doing is, while we're not, while the neighborhood may have other hot tubs in it and whatnot, I haven't heard that there's a movement of a necessary or a set setback in order to accommodate those in the neighborhood. But I think that we're, we may be setting that precedent by our decision here today. One of the other things that really wasn't discussed that concerns me is the, not just the size of the resistance pool that's there, but the pictures that were shown, and this is a question I don't have the answer to, other than to ask, you know, to know that I need the information, is what's the capacity of the resistance pool that's been purchased? This is not, according to the pictures that were shown, it's not just a resistance pool for one person to exercise in. It's, it's got seats in it that I think it probably accommodates more than one, if not perhaps four people, in the tub. If we could get, can I get a response to that, to know what we're being asked for?
Yeah, I think, I think that merits just a understanding of the design. It's, you know, and it's hard to tell if those are steps or seats, so I guess we can request clarification. So I will allow the applicant to address that question.
Question specifically is, what's the capacity of the pool?
The surface, I know the surface, I put it up on there on one of the slides, was 189.5 square feet.
That's really not my question, okay? There are a number of jets that are built around the pool. There are seats that are, that are molded into the fiberglass. I'd like to know what the capacity of the pool is.
When you say capacity, are you talking about human beings?
Yes, people. How many people can sit in the pool at one time?
So the purpose of why we bought that pool, or that swim spa, was for swimming, for exercise, okay? And there are a couple of seats in there, but it is mainly an open, stand swim spa?
I understand what you're purchasing it for. I'm asking you simply, how many seats are in the pool?
I think there are two.
Could we possibly pull the slide up?
I know there's a picture of a backup, I'm not sure if it's in the presentation, but it looks like page 13 of the backup, there's a...
Also, could I?
That's slide six.
Yeah. No, back it up, back it up one, if you would, please.
This one?
No, no, just, I guess another one. There was another... Yeah, that...
The cover?
No, the one, the one you just had would be fine. It appears that there, it appears that there are at least three seats along the back, in addition to the swimming area. And I can't tell if there are other jets around. But does the, do the specifications of the pool indicate how many, how many seats there are?
I, I'm not able to answer that question here.
Okay, then I'm going to assume that it's three people in there, okay? Or four people with the three seats I'm looking at, and the fourth person doing the exercising. And I think that, that begs the question of what the utilization might be on an ongoing basis, and that there's an alternative use for it, of people enjoying the hot tub by just sitting there and having the jets reflect on their, you know, enjoying the jets. And I think there's a, there's a valid concern by the neighborhood for perhaps not you, but someone who moves into your home if you're not living there anymore, of utilizing the pool for cocktail hour or whatever. And there may be some noise transmitted, and I don't think it should be understated and glossed over, okay? I think it ought to be stated properly.
May I comment?
Technically, we're in executive session.
I don't want to, I don't want to...
Yeah, in the future, we'll try to ask these questions of the applicant during the applicant's presentation.
I apologize.
But, yeah, briefly, please?
And I was told I was going to give a, allowed to give response.
Yes, so that's fine.
But I wasn't given at that time, but, so I'd like to just quickly comment. We're very quiet people. My wife, she, that conversation about going over to the neighbor and asking him not to play his TV loud, we are quiet. And because of my wife being slightly on the spectrum, she is quiet. We are church mouses. And we've lived there for 30, over 30 years. We do not plan to have wild parties. We never have had wild parties. So I would do a couple of other comments, real quick, because I want to respond. There was a... The landscaping and where this could be placed.
If I might just interrupt you, excuse me. I have some other concerns, and perhaps you want to hold those rebuttals when we do all of them, if that would be proper?
What I was going to say is, I, normally, we wouldn't have the applicant up here at all. I did not turn it back to the applicant for rebuttal, so let's go ahead and just allow the rebuttal to be completed now, and then we'll go back to executive session.
Thank you.
Just quickly, I'll be very quick. The landscaping is very important to us, and there, we looked at alternatives to place this, because we didn't want to go this route. I mean, this route is expensive to ask. And so we looked at our yard, we looked at multiple placements through the yard. The only other place was to make it the central focus of our rear yard, which we didn't want to do. We wanted it to be a minor, a minor feature, and that's why we looked at that. Liz, our neighbor, who doesn't object, she's very supportive. She's very supportive. She called us the other day to let us know that she had been intimidated by the people that had gone to her, knocking on her door repeatedly, trying to lobby her to be in opposition. We did not lobby her. We did not lobby her. We just gave her the information, referred her. So I want to make that clear. I am not leaving. My wife is not leaving. There's been a claim here that we're leaving. We plan to stay here. We love the neighborhood. We're not moving anywhere else. And one last thing, we did have to call the police on one of the speakers, because he was resorting to screaming at me. It became weekly, weekly, that we had to deal with this. We considered, we called the police, because when you look at a restraining order, you have to call the police first.
Okay. We'll go back to executive session again. Normally, we do go to a point, just a rebuttal after, after public comment. So we'll, we'll consider that the rebuttal and back to executive session.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. The, another one of the criteria that we are asked to consider is whether or not this is a self-imposed hardship. And I think other people have mentioned that. And I would ask staff that, where we have something that's being recommended by a doctor, and that, and that's one of the justifications for the hardship, to, to please have us a letter from the doctor as a part of the file, so that we can depend upon that as, you know, as a valid reason. And, but the, the other issue is, from a self-imposed standpoint, the fact that the applicant wanted to have it in a particular location where it could be in a location that wouldn't cause this scenario, to me is, is basically what a self-imposed hardship is, and I, that's, those are my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. I've no further comments. I'll turn it back to the board one last time if anyone had any, any other comments, questions, discussion for executive session, but if not, then we'll entertain a motion.
I just had one question, I think, for the condition. It's stated, "Property owners must maintain the upkeep of the existing fence and landscaping to ultimately reduce the impact of the neighboring property located to the east." Is that a code compliance thing anyways? Do we need the condition language as part of the motion?
That is a good point. I mean, that would be, you know, typically required as, as a matter of general code compliance. Give Mr. Thomas a run for his money today and ask him, ask him maybe to weigh in. You know, sometimes it's belt and suspenders to emphasize that type of condition, but whether or not, you know, that's a specific condition, or whether that's, that's just required of code anyway, and therefore is not really a condition that's needed.
Perhaps if the applicant would accept it, could read, "Must maintain and upkeep all fencing and landscaping?"
Okay.
Don't expect questions.
Which still is, I think, generally, but I guess in this case, you're not required, maybe the distinction, Jonathan, is that you're not required to have a six-foot fence, that you could have a four-foot fence back there. And so maybe in this case, if the condition were to be that the applicant maintains a... were to be that the applicant maintains a six-foot fence, or something along those lines, to guarantee that it is at the maximum height allowable, that it wasn't later put it, you know, set to a four-foot fence, or something along those lines, maybe, because that, that I think is, is, is part of the intent of the condition, is to ensure that it's, you know, that it is the six-foot, as opposed to just, again, a more minimal four-foot fence, which would be allowed.
Right, and, and since we are suggesting that existing, where it existing because of the proposed new fence be clarified anyways, perhaps we can edit the language of that condition to identify the maximum height, or specify the six-foot to try and assuage the acoustic and proximity concerns along that buffer.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, you might consider, rather than stating a specific height, you might say consistent with requirements of the zoning code, in the event that that at some point may change, and they change the fence.
Okay. So I did also want to note that there are two items related to this case number in front of us. First is an item related to the waiver, and then the, the other item would be the actual Class B special use permit. So the first motion would be relative to the waiver, and then if a condition were placed, I believe that would be placed on the Class B special use permit if the waiver were to be, to move forward. So again, unless there's further discussion, we'll entertain a motion first on the granting or denying of the waiver.
Can you still have a question?
Yes, no one's made a motion, so go ahead.
So, I guess for the city attorney, is, is location in this request, is that considered a hardship, or is a hardship, so the variance is asking for, for the setback, if there are other, no, staff is saying this is, there is no other location for this, or, and if, and if there is a different location, and he's chosen this one, but does that become a hardship? Does he meet the hardship requirements?
You can't make a determination on that, because there really wasn't any testimony about it, and it's not predicated on hardship. The application before you is exactly as it sits, and your question is, as it sits and as it's presented, does it meet the standards required for approval or denial?
Thank you for clarification on that.
Again, is there a motion on the granting or denying of the waiver?
I'm prepared to make a motion, and this is coming from, you know, staff's recommendation of approval with conditions. They're the experts on the compliance of these standards, and I'm looking at the waiver standards from section ninety-four dash two seventy-three A two of the compliance with the comprehensive plan, the general character of the surrounding properties, vehicular or pedestrian traffic impacts, health, safety, security, morals of general welfare, public services, definitions and standards, and alternative measures, and I can't seem to go against the staff recommendation of approval on any one of those criteria, and so therefore I will move that the zoning board of appeals grant the waiver for zoning board of appeals case number three, four, one, eight. Actually, I'm sorry, I have to pause my motion here, because we were presented with agenda item three, four, one, eight. The waiver language suggests three, four, three, five, so I want to just get that clarification on, out there. Is this three, four, one, eight, or three, four, three, five?
Yeah, I just noticed the same thing. I was wondering if staff could clarify that. The agenda refers to it as, as agenda item three, four, one, eight. The recommended motion refers to it as case number three, four, three, five. And in the, the top of the materials, the cover sheet refers to case number three, four, three, five.
So the one on the, we still like recommend approval, that one's correct.
Three, four, three, five.
Three, four, three, five.
Okay, thank you. So I'll restate that. I moved up the zoning board of appeals grant the waiver for zoning board of appeal case three, four, three, five, as listed in the staff report dated March first, twenty twenty four. This motion is based on the testimony presented at the hearing, along with the application submitted in the staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes findings of fact that all of the applicable criteria in section ninety-four dash two seven three A two of the city of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met.
Okay, motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second people.
So for this item, Chambers, yeah, member Chambers is an alternate, so I don't believe that you would be able to, to second.
I'll send a motion to the, to the sink of the, of the motion.
Okay. The motion has been made by board member Burgess, and seconded by board member Hyman. I'll ask the, our board secretary to please call the roll.
Christopher Hagan?
Yes.
Christopher Cameron?
No.
Michael Hyman?
No.
Jonathan Burgess?
Yes.
Alfred Fields?
No.
Okay, the motion fails two to three. Take a, see if there is an alternate motion.
upon approval of the waiver. Otherwise, it would not meet the standards. You do have a motion to deny the application, which could be considered should the board decide.
Well, yeah, and I guess a question would be, by the, the motion to grant the waivers failing, does that automatically result in, in, you know, nonapproval, or, or do we need a positive motion to deny the waiver? And if so, does the motion to deny the waiver require four votes also?
It would simply stand as not approved.
Okay.
And staff would have to get together, decide the next step, but you do have that other option, should you choose to proceed in that direction.
Well, and, and I, and I apologize, because if, if the motion to grant the waiver was denied, you're saying that there could still be a motion to grant, on granting the special, or Class B special use permit contingent upon granting of the waiver?
No, if, if the waiver fails, then a motion to grant the Class B cannot stand, because it says it meets the requirements of the code.
Right.
It only meets those requirements if the waiver is granted.
Correct.
So if the waiver is denied, it can't be approved. The other option you have presented is a motion to deny. Or if you take no action, then staff would have to get together and decide how they proceed from this point.
Understood. So yes, the only acceptable motion is, on the Class B special use permit, would be to deny because the waiver is not granted, or for the board to take no action, potentially would, would be the other option.
And, and perhaps a question, and I'm not sure, Richard or Angela, if you have it, if no action is taken, does that give you the option to reconsider and see if you can come back with something that may address any concerns? As opposed to denying? If it's denied, then you can't come back for a year, is that correct?
Correct.
Whereas if you take no action, perhaps it could be addressed in some fashion, and you could bring it back, so.
Well, yeah, my, so, so I think, if I understand correctly, let me restate that. The distinction is that if, if this board were to vote to deny the Class B special use permit, the applicant may not come back before this board for a period of one year.
Correct.
If no action is taken, they would potentially have the option to come back before this board sooner, if they so chose.
Correct. Rick Green Development Services Director, they need four votes for the waiver and the Class B special use permit. So a, a three to two vote to deny the waiver is tantamount to a denial. I don't think a further vote is, is required. And as you stated, with the Class B, it's, it's whatever action you want to take from that point on.
Okay. So, so at this point, the, the motion to approve the wa, the granting of the waiver was, was not approved, that there was a, a vote taken to, to, to not approve that, so therefore, by default, the, the waiver is not approved. This board has the option regarding the Class B special use permit to make a motion to deny or to not take action. So I'll leave it up to the board. If I hear a motion, we'll proceed. If not, then we will consider this case closed. So I'll entertain a motion. If there is no motion, then there's no action taken on the Class B special use permit. Again, the, the waiver is, is not granted, and by, by, and then the, the action, the action taken on the Class B special use permit is that, is that this board did not take action on it, but it is therefore also not approved. So that concludes.
Mr. Chair, may I suggest it may be helpful to the applicant if, if you would entertain some discussion from the board as to their concerns in the event that the applicant chooses to bring it back.
Yeah. Thank you very much. So I, I agree. I think that would be wise instruction for this board to provide some guidance. So I think the options are, and again, I'll, I'll turn it over to members of this board, for us to either provide some guidance on alterations or changes that could be made to the application, that if a waiver were still required, that, that this board would consider. The other option that the applicant would have would be to locate it, you know, more than five feet off of the property line, and also continue to meet the other, the rear yard setbacks, front yard setback, et cetera, to meet all other setback requirements, in which case a waiver would, would not be needed. So those are, you know, I think, again, the guidance from the board would be helpful for, for the applicant.
If I understand correctly, should the applicant present an application that meets all of the requirements without any need to come before the zoning board, that the, there would be a, it would follow a normal course of action, and a permit would be granted for it, is that?
Yeah, my, my understanding from staff's presentation, and, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is, is that the only reason this came before this board was because of the need for the waiver, or the request from the applicant for the waiver to reduce the side yard setback. If it were located five feet off of that property line, then it would have just gone basically to the building department, and would not have come before this board.
Right.
I'm seeing nodding, so we'll take that as correct. So that could also be, again, as I was saying, the, the direction from this board, that, that, that the board feels that it should just be moved and not come back in front of this board. But again, I don't want to put a word in anybody's mouth, so please provide that, whatever input for the applicant may, may be useful.
Apparently, the applicant doesn't want to hear from us, Mr. Chairman, so I would move for adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry, no, no.
No comment.
It's just an option, opportunity for you, so.
So outside of that, is there, is there, I guess, is there any guidance from the board, at which case board members feel that, that this could have been entertained, that the waiver could be entertained if some other change were made to the application?
Well, I don't know that he necessarily needs a waiver. I think the, the real issue, Mr. Flick, is whether this is a self-imposed hardship, because it does appear to be other areas you could place it, and I know it wouldn't be as convenient, and I think that's probably one of the main issues here, because we have to take seriously the setbacks, they're, they're set up. And so when we look at what an applicant needs to show, and one of the issues is if, are there, are there no alternative areas here? And there, and from what was presented, there do appear to be alternatives, although maybe not as appealing. So I don't think your neighbors can prevent you from having your spa, even though they may like to. The question for the board is not whether we're going, we're in favor or not of a spa, it's really the location, and whether there are alternatives available for that.
I think staff is at the, I, I'd like Ms. Jones Van to.
And Angela Van Penning is owner administrator. Two points I'd like to make, regardless of how you guys are going to vote, this is Class B with waivers. Self-imposed hardship is a variance. So I was wanting to, showing the distinction, but look at the standards. The standards for a Class B do not include self-imposed hardship.
It doesn't?
Let's not say self-imposed hardship, that's a variance. That's specifically tied to a variance whether it's a self-imposed hardship of the applicant. The Class B standards are very specific, and as you've seen in your staff report, and the waiver standards are very specific to basically say that. So I just want to clarify that. I keep seeing hardship, hardship, and if you read those standards very clearly, for a Class B and for the waiver, there's no, there's no standard that says that. And the second part, in terms of, and I defer to the city attorney, I mean, basically, if you're going to deny, in effect, you deny the case, or we have to figure out how to come back. I would suggest you do a vote, make a vote to deny the waiver, because that's basically what you guys want to do, deny the waiver. You did three, two, but technically, you denied the waiver based on the standards that are in the report. So you denied it, in effect, but you didn't do it based on, I don't see any standards to deny the waiver. Just say you denied based on whatever standards we have in our code.
I would just comment that maybe we need more time to consider and read through the standards, to get a full understanding of what we're, we're making that based on, because at this point, it is a difficult decision, based on all the information that's been presented, for me to just assume all of this information, and then deny it based on one of those standards, without furtherly applying each standard to this situation, to make sure, in, in my seat, that I'm making the best decision for the community and the applicant. So by taking no action, and if it's going to be brought back before us, now we know what this situation is in more detail, and I'll be able to make a better informed decision whether they fit all of them. So, thank you.
And Mr. Chair, I think it would be important, if, if we did not identify the waiver standard on which the motion to denial was based, we do need to make that as a matter of record, which standards, waiver standards, they're listed in your report.
Yep.
Were not met as a basis for the denial.
Yeah, agreed. So it's starting on page, it's the page number nineteen in the, in the board packet, are the, are a list of the waiver standards. There were three votes that were in the negative on the motion to grant the waiver, so we would look for either, I think, those voting in the negative to identify the waiver standards that were the reason for the negative vote, or we could also entertain a motion to deny, and then that motion would include the, the reason for the denial, based on one of the waiver standards. So, and I'm not seeing at the top of, of this, you know, page of the PDF, but if you look at the bottom, it's where it says ZBA case number thirty-four, thirty-five, in the footer, page nineteen.
And there also, more concisely captured, on page thirty-five, I think, on one page.
Okay, yes, I see, the, the pages are on the right side of, there, it's, it's in a different spot than I was expecting to look for, but correct. As Mr. Burgess stated, it's, it's the thirty-fifth page of the PDF document, the page numbered nineteen at the bottom. but correct. As Mr. Burgess stated, it's the 35th page of the PDF document, the page numbered 19 at the bottom. Yes, okay. So further to my commentary before, yeah, again, I suggested that we either have the votes that were in the negative, identify the reasons for the waiver standards that not being met, that were behind the motion to deny. But I think it is cleaner, it sounds like, and again, based on consultation with the board attorney, that it would be cleaner and more maybe directive for us to entertain a motion to deny, citing the exact waiver standards that are the reason for that motion.
So could I ask, could we, again, focus on these specific standards? I understand they're on page 19. I think I was focused on the ability of the applicant to locate the spa in an alternative area and the issue of hardship. So perhaps the city attorney, the staff could address that issue, whether that's an appropriate basis in which to deny the application or not.
I think, so I was going to say, we can, the standards are the, whether it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, whether it's consistent with the general character, consistent with surrounding properties, vehicular, pedestrian traffic, health, safety, security, morals, or general welfare, public services, and then definitions and standards or alternative measures. So I think, I mean, if the city attorney wants to weigh in, then that may be appropriate. But I think you can see that a couple of them, you know, specifically are related to, you know, I think the placement of it, which would be probably the ones related to surrounding properties or alternative measures. But, sorry, I don't know if the city attorney wanted to add to that.
Well, that is correct. You'd have to find that within one of these standards. In words, it can't be a standard in and of itself. The standard for granting or denying the waiver are those listed. And if you deny it, you would have to do it based on it failing to meet one or more of those standards. Whether it does, of course, is your decision based on the evidence presented.
So I think Board Member Hyman made the comment. So the waiver about, just clarifying the difference between the waiver and the sorry, the, is it between what constitutes a waiver and what constitutes a variance, or? Okay. So your microphone's off, but.
That's correct. I'm confused between the need, do we have a need for the waiver and the variance? Or the variance isn't even, is not a part of this?
So we have to, requesting, you know, to relief from the side yard setback is classified as a waiver request by city standards. So for that, the, those criteria that are listed in the packet are the reasons to consider when determining whether or not, whether we can approve or deny a waiver. And again, there are a couple of those criteria, as you read through them, that specifically have to do with, you know, I think, the impact on surrounding properties or the surrounding neighborhood, which, again, from the folks, the folks who voted in the negative would best be able to articulate what was the reason behind their negative vote. But it seems like from the commentary, that was part of the justification that I heard.
And Chair, I'll just point out that this application now is not a request for a variance. There is a narrative in your background material that perhaps explains the application and basically provides that spas are permitted as an accessory structure in an SF7 zoning district. Spa in this district must meet the setback requirements. If it doesn't, the application, the applicant is entitled to request a Class B special use permit to request the waiver. That is the action you're considering today, not a variance from the requirements of the code, but a Class B to request a waiver from the setback requirements. That's your consideration.
So again, I'd point to the waiver standards that are on page 19, the page that's number 19 on the bottom. It was the 35th page of the materials that list the waiver standards. So looking at those categories, we would just need, if there is a motion to be made to deny the waiver, then a inclusion in that motion citing which of these waiver standards or which one or more of these waiver standards are not met.
Can we go back into executive session to have this?
Yes.
I don't know if that's what we're in, if we're.
There's no motion on the floor, so I think we, currently, so I think we would consider ourselves to still be executive session.
All right. So just to be clear, my concern was, I thought, Mr. Flick, there are alternative places in his property where he could have placed this, that he had placed this and created this situation. However, that doesn't seem to be a base in which to deny a waiver. The only item that I would see would be the effect on the surrounding properties, which appears to be minimal. That, to me, is the distinction between seeking a variance, apparently, and a waiver.
So, well, and the waiver was, again, specifically to go to be two feet off the property line instead of five feet off the property line. So it's, the waiver specifically deals with the placement of that. So, you know, again, if there's a motion to deny for that reason, because of the placement, I think it just would require looking at these waiver criteria and seeing which one applies to that for anyone wishing to make that motion.
But it would also seem, if I might, Mr. Chairman, it would also seem that the effect of this could well be that the whole issue of the total side setbacks equalling 15 feet, which is pretty much consistent throughout the entire city of the old subdivisions, unless I'm in, excuse me?
So the 15 foot is primary structure. So if he's adding to his house, the accessory structure would be five feet. So there's no 15 with the accessory structure.
So an accessory, so that doesn't come into play at all relative to the split of the 15 feet, is what you're saying?
Correct. 15 feet is based off the primary structure setbacks in SF7 zoning.
Could, may I address staff? Could this conceivably open the door for someone to build on the property line, not having any setback at all on the side yard for a non-primary building facility? Could he have asked us to put it on the property line instead and still fallen within?
That would be, well, two things. That would be a separate application.
I understand that. That's not my point. My point is, is that the door that we're opening by virtue of allowing an accessory use to be, to impact into the side yards, any setback for that matter?
Well, that would be, okay, so what you were addressing earlier with the impacting the other people, this would be, what you're talking about would be considered a variance, not a waiver. So it would still have, it would fall under the variance standards. So it would be two separate standards that you're looking at. Does that make sense? Did I answer that question?
Angela Van Penning is owner administrator. What you're saying is two separate things. You're saying accessory structures, swimming pool are a five-foot setback. Somebody wants to come in and do a zero-foot setback for a swimming pool. Yeah, anybody can ask the question. Is that what you're saying? Can they ask the question? Yes. With staff, look at the same circumstances and recommend, we have, based on what's presented to us. But the way the code is written today, accessory structures are five feet from the property line. And typically, most of, because of the way this is done, it has, it fell under the swimming pool requirements, based on the size, I think it's the water depth.
Yeah.
Based on the water depth, that's why we're here as a Class B, because by definition, for a swimming pool, it falls under swimming pool. So that's why we're here for a Class B, to waive that five-foot side setback from water edge requirement.
So to me, it doesn't sound like it's interchangeable with other accessory structures. It's specific to the setback of the water's edge, which is for this specific case. So it isn't interchangeable potentially with other accessory uses within that five feet.
Have you made this request previously throughout your time here with?
For a swimming pool or spa?
For the setback.
Yes, we have setbacks all the time, especially for odd-shaped lots where they want to put a swimming pool in. It's either in a front setback or in some of this corner side setbacks. Yes, it just depends on the shape of the lot and the circumstances.
What's your criteria for denying, for recommending denial?
Same criteria that you have, based on the standards. It's all based on the standards. We look at the standards that we've given, and we do the standards, the evidence we give from the applicant, and it's all still based on the standards. Deny, approve is all based on the standards.
Let me ask you, if there's an alternative location in the property, but the applicant seeks to place it in one area, that doesn't seem to come into play, whether there's alternatives available?
Well, we had the whole conversation, and we've been going around with Mr. Carl Flick for a while. It hasn't just come in as an application, you know, last month. We've been a while, going around a while, trying to find a location that could meet the code, based on what we saw in the pictures, based on what he said. To put it back there under trees and all of that would not be based, best location that staff felt and he felt for the actual spot to go, based on what's back there in that area. He has a paved patio, but given the size and to put back there under trees, I guess trees and all the trees back there, he felt better on the side would be better spot for it. But yes, that's what we looked at it. But again, we've been going back and forth with him for about six months or so, trying to find a better location where he didn't need to come in and get a waiver.
And what was the staff's view on appropriate location?
I didn't, let me do the research.
I had multiple discussions with Carl Flick based on it to trying to make it comply. So, because it would save time, he got his permit right away. But based off his lot with all the trees, the awnings, being able to access it, that was the most viable spot that staff found.
If I could, Mr. Chair, I also want to talk through the idea of above-ground versus buried or in-ground pool. And in this case, if the neighbor is most affected by the proximity of this pool on the east side, and she's got a large tree on her property that would be impacted with an at-grade pool, then going above ground mitigates her impacts. But my colleague had a fair point, that a three-foot seat wall with a six-foot fence, you may likely see over that fence line, and being that six foot is the maximum height of a fence, we'd have to rely on vegetation of some kind, potentially visually screened above the six-foot mark. But the trade-off is, do you go into the ground and have the problem with the roots from your neighboring property? Or is it a noise pollution above-ground concern? And how best could that be mitigated between a two-foot setback and a five-foot setback? They'd have the same kind of noise concerns. And that's why I asked earlier the pool equipment location effect, if a pool, we all know what pool equipment sounds like, I think, the decibel levels of that equipment relative to a one-foot setback, which is allowed by right, compared to a fully encompassed, so packaged solution like this. I would be curious, because I haven't seen what the decibel readings are for a system like this compared to a traditional pool equipment. But the proximity related to the acoustic concerns should be thought about as the same criteria that we'd evaluate against pool equipment within a five-foot setback to a property line. So I just wanted to bring those points up for the reason why I was supporting the application earlier, because those things have been kind of thought through at this point.
Understood. Yep. Hopefully, the board has had time to consider further the waiver standards. Again, would suggest that if there's a motion to deny, that one of those waiver standards be identified and incorporated in that motion. Do I hear a motion?
A motion to deny, is that what you're asking about?
Correct. Yep.
There are some performance standards contained in these waiver standards that we don't know. You know, the noise factors of surrounding properties, you know, the effect on them. Because we may know some noise levels of the equipment itself, but the use of it and how it affects the surrounding neighbors, we don't know. My feeling is, is that it has the potential, because of the size and the capacity of it, the people capacity, that it could get noisy, you know, unintentionally.
So it sounds like, which waiver standard then is that?
The surrounding properties, you know, and.
So it sounds like that's your factor for considering the denial. And although I would agree that some of those seem to be specifically measurable, there are a number in there that, you know, I think are more terms of, probably a little bit more qualitative than quantitative, including the terms peaceful enjoyment or use of physical activity. Because there's, you know, whether, if it gets used, period, that's physical activity occurring there. So again, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, may I point out now that you will need to have received evidence on those facts to make a decision based on it?
You'd need.
Well, that's an option.
You'd need evidence either way, right? Either that there isn't an impact or that there is, to support either a motion to approve or a motion to deny.
That is correct. Your decision must be based on evidence presented at the hearing, and that evidence must then comply or not with one of these standards.
Well, and I think to that point, I, you know, and as is with, as is the case with any case that comes before us, I'd, you know, read through the staff report, and, you know, staff has assessed each of the waiver criteria, waiver standards compared to the, you know, the materials that are provided in the application, and they indicate whether or not the waiver standards, you know, that, based on their review of the application, whether it complies or not. And so a lot of times, that's the evidence that I rely upon in voting here. As Board Member Hyman mentioned, there is also the option to continue, so there's that option as well.
In that regard, Mr. Chairman, I point out that you would have the option to, a person on the winning side could move to reconsider if you wanted to receive additional evidence. And you could then request that that additional evidence be brought back, and you could reconsider this matter as well.
You're saying if the, well, the, a person on the, who voted to, who voted in the negative on the motion to grant the waiver?
Yes, the motion that prevailed, a person could move to reconsider. If you did, that would then negate the action of the first motion. If you now want additional evidence, you can articulate what that is. Staff and the applicant could bring it back, and you could then reconsider the matter.
Okay. So, if, does everybody...
Before we do that, if I might, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
A question for staff. In your, in your recommendation for approval, according to the waiver standards that are listed before us, okay, did you consider the surrounding properties relative to the peaceful enjoyment that everybody's entitled to, or the economic value that it might have on being next door to a potential, this potential noise source? I mean, those types of things that are identified in quote-unquote "surrounding properties", were those considered specifically as to what those levels might be and what the tolerance level would be to approve or not to approve based on that standard? Because that's what we're being asked to do.
Yes. When looking at any application of this one, you consider all factors, like, how does this one thing affect the general area? What does it have on the neighborhood? You consider all the factors when you're looking into an application.
And what was your basis of consideration? How do you consider what's identified in C, surrounding properties? Those things specifically, because that's sort of where my mind is, you know, trying to wrap my head around, to know that what I feel is that it's going to have a negative effect, but I don't have anything to base that upon. And Sam's telling us that I need to have something to base that upon that you've done.
Okay. Okay. So, I'll read my response to the staff report. So, it's just, the use surroundings of the subject property are currently single-family residence. The fitness spas are permitted as accessory structures in residential districts. Several properties adjacent to the property have swimming school spas. Therefore, a fitness spa being proposed will still be in harmony with the character existing use in the immediate area. So, it's still going to be in harmony. Other neighbors have pools, other ones have spas. The setback itself is what the waiver is requesting for.
Okay, thank you.
So, procedurally, what had been outlined by our board attorney was a suggestion that one of the members who voted in the negative on the motion that we, that we considered, which was the motion to grant the waiver, that if one of those board members made a motion first to reconsider, and we take a vote, and if we do then approve reconsideration of that motion, then a board member can make a motion to recommend that we, is it a tabling or a continuance?
A continuance, say, should you choose to your next meeting and indicate the information you'd like to have presented at that time.
Okay. Okay. So, if there's any appetite on the board for that, we'll entertain that at this time.
So, the choices are either rehear the motion to approve or to table this, basically.
So, it, well, it would be to, in order to table it, or to, sorry, to continue it to the next hearing, we would first need to reconsider the motion, because the motion to, so at this point in time, we did not vote in favor of granting the waiver. So, it would be to reconsider it, and then instead of voting again whether to grant or deny the waiver, vote to continue it to the next hearing. And then, as our board attorney pointed out, to then also explain the evidence that we are looking for to be provided prior to the next hearing, in order for us to be able to then make a, take an action on the item.
I move to reconsider the motion that was passed earlier.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. A motion has been made to reconsider the item. It was moved by Board Member Fields and seconded by Vice Chair Cameron. So, I'll ask our board secretary to please call the roll. Christopher Hagan.
May I suggest that you can strike that?
Okay. So, a vote in the affirmative would be a vote to reconsider the vote that was taken.
Christopher Cameron?
Yes.
Christopher Hagan?
Yes.
Michael Hyman?
Yes.
Jonathan Burgess?
Yes.
Alfred Fields?
Yes.
Okay. So, the motion to reconsider passes five to zero. So, the floor is open again for a motion. And again, if the motion is to continue this item, we would ask that the maker of the motion include the additional material or additional information that is requested to be provided in order to make a decision on this at the next meeting. And if you'd like, we can, we're back in executive session, or still in executive session. So, if you want to discuss what those, what that information is, feel free.
I think we'd like to see the, if I might, specifically in the waiver standards, what the measures are and how, I mean, how we can, because it's very obtuse, you know, as to what, what it, what would be reason to deny based upon that. But I'd like to see, I don't know if it's, if it's available data on hot tubs with four people in them, as to what sound level that might, you know, might create for adjacent neighbors and affect the character of the neighborhood. I don't know how to put that into the motion, but that's what I'd like to see in order to be able to have a basis for a decision.
Okay. So, yeah, I think that's useful. That's helpful guidance. I think we could also maybe specifically identify one or two of the waiver standards that are kind of in question here, because I think a number of them are probably not in question. For example, public services is probably, you know, not in question. It's not going to overburden public schools, or, you know, overburden, you know, the...
Agreed.
Fire department, or et cetera, you know. So, if we could hone in on what specific waiver standards, you know, again, I think it probably is one or two of them. And then, and then I think your information about, or your discussion about what specific items within that are helpful.
Well, to your point, I think that the general character of the neighborhood and the surrounding properties certainly ought to be included, and perhaps alternative measures if we need those to add in as suggestions for the, for the special, the special permit or conditions, if you will.
Okay. Other discussion from the board?
No, I think those are correct, B, C, and H.
Okay. If that's the case, then I will, if there's no further discussion, entertain a motion.
Move that we table zoning appeal, zoning board of appeals case number three, four, three, five, and request additional information regarding the waiver standards, section ninety-four dash two, three, A, two, B, general character, C, surrounding properties, and H, alternative measures.
Is that motion to continue until your next meeting?
Yes, continuance to the next meeting.
Second the motion.
Okay. The motion has been made by Board Member Fields and seconded by Board Member Hyman. I'll ask the board secretary to please call the roll.
Christopher Hagan?
Yes.
Christopher Cameron?
Yes.
Michael Hyman?
Yes.
Jonathan Burgess?
Yes.
Alfred Fields?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. The motion passes five to zero, so this item is continued to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the West Palm Beach Zoning Board of Appeals. Okay? And we'll suggest that the applicant and affected parties continue to work with city staff in the meantime to address the items that we provided guidance on here today. Thank you. Okay. Moving on through the agenda, that was the only case that was on our agenda today. So, go forward. There's no unfinished business, no new business, no other business that I'm aware of. So, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay. Moved by all members, I think. I'll say that was moved by Board Member Fields. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Vice Chair Cameron. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. At 3:30 PM, the zoning board of appeals meeting has been adjourned.